Good afternoon and welcome to the Moore County Schools Board of Education regular business meeting on September the eighth, two thousand and twenty five. We're called to order at four o'clock P. M. Is there a motion to go in closed session for the purposes as stated on the agenda? Is there a second? Thank you very much. Motion by Ms. Davis, second by Ms. Bruno. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Dr. Dahl isn't here yet.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Moore County Schools Board of Education Regular Business Meeting on September 8th, 2025. We've got lots of good people in the audience, and we welcome you all here tonight. Is there a motion to return to open session, board members?
A motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We're called to order at 5:30 PM. Before we approve the agenda, I need to take a moment to remove Item A, North Carolina Protection Group Security Personnel Contract from the agenda to an assigned and temporary safety committee comprised of myself, Mrs. Davis, and Mr. Benway. The bottom line is that we all want school resource officers on our campuses, yet despite additional funding and raises, we are not able to find enough applicants for these open positions. The superintendent's recommendation is an attempt of an additional layer of protection while we look for these applicants, but at this time, I am forming a temporary safety committee to move as quickly as possible to learn more about the root of the problem and provide some context so we might make an informed decision. So that has been moved to the committee.
Madam Chair, who are the members of this ad hoc committee?
Um, myself, Mrs. Davis, and Mr. Benway. So also at this time...
I'm sorry, point of orders. This discussionable. I just have a point of order.
Uh...
The chair can move this to a committee, but if you have a question, that's fine.
Okay, question?
I just respectfully questioned the members of the committee. I mean, I've been the outspoken advocate for upgrading our SROs for well over four years. I've been hip-deep in it, and quite frankly, I have decades of experience in the law enforcement realm. I've attended when my company was the national gold sponsor of the FBI National Academy Associations. I attended 20 to 30 lectures specifically dealing with SROs in 20 or 30 different states. There's no one on this board, there's actually no one in this building who knows more about campus law enforcement and school resource officers than myself, but you put, say, Ms. Davis on the committee who has zero experience with law enforcement, to my knowledge.
Thank you for your offer, Mr. Hensley. I'll take that under consideration. I'm just going to stay as I am at this time, but I will take it under consideration. I appreciate your comments.
I would just add that, you know, the role of the chair is to select the most qualified people to serve on committees, and it just seems like I'm the most, by far, the most qualified person to serve on that committee.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, also, because of timing and the non-controversial nature, Mr. Benway had a request for a resolution about our 250th anniversary with our constitution, and we had a little extra time after our closed session, and we were able to have our superintendent and our board attorney to review this item. So at this time, is there a motion to suspend Board Policy 2330 to address and allow him to address his proposal and add his presentation and add it to the action agenda?
Does that move?
All right, we have a... Do we have a motion?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, motion by Mr. Benway, seconded by Dr. Dahl and Ms. Davis, so we'll add that to our action agenda items. All right, all in favor say aye.
I would like to discuss this. This is discussionable.
Okay, any comments?
As you know, I was vehemently opposed to the implementation of Moore County Schools' Policy 2330. Actually, Ms. Bruno and myself argued vehemently against it when it was passed by this board about 18 months ago, because I felt, I believe, that it would be used to quell the voices and the expression of school board members, and specifically the six-day requirement that school board members have to submit, if one of the board members wants to put something up there to make a point, we have to submit it six working days in advance. And I always wondered where that six working days came from. It's kind of odd. Why not three working days? Why not, I mean, the central office only gives us 72 hours' notice of what they publish. So I always wondered that, but if you look, that's six days from the time that the agenda's published for the work session on a Friday until a week and a half later, or two Mondays later that the business meetings held, there's not six workdays. That rule was specifically put in place to keep board members, who are supposed to be part of a deliberative body, emphasis on deliberative body, from expressing ourselves, and it's blatantly unfair, and it's done to suppress deliberations, which is what we're supposed to do. I asked the policy committee to bring that up last week. They said that their, it's in the minutes, that their policy committee brought it up and decided to take no action, no action on it, but yet, here we are, the very next meeting, suspending the rule to make an exception. And what's interesting is I've asked to suspend the rule, I've asked the chair to suspend the rule for me, and she refuses to do it. But that's because she didn't agree with what I was saying, but in this case, perhaps maybe she agrees with Mr. Benway. So the rule is being applied unequally. I'm going to vote for it, because I'm always going to vote for free speech and free expression for everyone, whether they're board members or the member of the public who wants to stand up here and speak. But this is yet another example of this policy being, you know, the chair using her discretion to apply it unequally, and that's viewpoint discrimination, and that's not the role of a chair. So anyway, I'm going to support this, because I'm always for free speech and I'm always for free expression, but I just once again want to point out how this rule, which is routinely used to suppress the viewpoints of board members, is being applied unequally based solely upon the opinion of the chair, and that's not right. Thank you.
All right, any other comments?
Yes, I would like this policy to be discussed at the next policy meeting.
Madam Chair, that's not on the floor right now.
Okay, sorry. Any other comments about?
No, no comments.
All right.
Would this be added as Board Action Item 6E?
Yes, sir.
Actually, D.
Or D, we took off A. Do we have to re-letter everything, or can we?
No, you can leave A and just, it'll be...
Okay. Let's just make it E. All right, thank you very much. All in favor of the motion to suspend Policy 2330 so that Mr. Benway can share his presentation and information with us today and add it to an action item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right, we're to our favorite part, and that is our pledge of allegiance. And Dr. Wilson, we'd like to call you up.
I approve the agenda as amended.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. Do I need, do we need to approve the agenda as amended? Thank you. All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Does that move?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now to my favorite part. So we're at our celebrations and our pledge of allegiance, so Dr. Wilson, if you'll join us at the podium and lead us in the pledge.
And my apologies this evening that my student who is giving the inspiration is not here. She was called into work, and students, they have commitments to school and work, and I'm proud of her for keeping that commitment to work when she got called in. So I apologize that she's not here. But if everybody will stand and join me for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Ms. Davis?
All right, I would just tell your student that we were still inspired despite their not being here, that they're learning and that knowing that going to work is important, and that's part of education, and what we're here for is to prepare them for the future and how to handle it responsibly. So I think it's still very inspiring if you'll pass that along. So at this moment of, this time, we'll just take a moment of silence. School is still fresh. We still have lots of little bumps in the road that we're working out, and just if we'll keep our teachers and staff and students on our minds and their thoughts and prayers for just a minute, please.
All right, now it's another favorite time, our staff and student recognitions. Mr. Bachelor?
Thank you, Board Chair, Dr. Calcutt. First, can we have our recognitions from Cameron Elementary School? Please join Board Chair Calcutt and Board Member Benway at the front. Courtney Howard is this month's Engage, Inspires to See Certified Staff Honoree for Cameron Elementary School. Mrs. Howard, exceptional children's teacher at Cameron Elementary, exemplifies dedication and teamwork. Now, in her third year at Cameron, she goes above and beyond to meet the unique needs of every student while fostering a supportive and welcoming classroom environment. Her willingness to assist colleagues and her passion for student success make her an invaluable member of the school community. We are proud to recognize Mrs. Howard's commitment to excellence. Destiny Melton is this month's Engage, Inspires to See Support Staff Honoree for Cameron Elementary School. As Cameron Elementary's data manager, Destiny ensures accuracy and efficiency in the school's information systems. Her detail-oriented work and steady support are critical to student and staff success each day. Destiny's reliability, professionalism, and dedication reflect her strong commitment to the school's mission. We are grateful for the vital role she plays in supporting both teaching and learning. With family members and Principal Cassidy, please stand as we recognize tonight's honorees. And next, with our honorees for Carthage Elementary School, please join Board Chair Calcutt and Board Member Benway at the front. Kayla Carter is this month's Engage, Inspires to See Certified Staff Honoree for Carthage Elementary School. Mrs. Carter, a fourth-grade ELA teacher at Carthage Elementary, is known for her engaging lessons, high expectations, and ability to make every student feel supported. With her all-in mentality, she builds strong relationships that inspire confidence and academic growth. Her leadership contributed to outstanding ELA results last year, and she continues to go above and beyond launching the school's new bike club. Mrs. Carter is truly a remarkable educator who makes a lasting impact. Sharon Street is this month's Engage, Inspires to See Support Staff Honoree for Carthage Elementary School. Ms. Street, EC Self-Contain teacher assistant at Carthage Elementary, brings energy and positivity to her work every day. Her leadership and can-do spirit make her an indispensable part of the team, and her dedication extends beyond the school year through the summer ESY support. She consistently prioritizes student achievement, demonstrating both compassion and commitment. We are proud to honor Ms. Street for the extraordinary difference she makes in students' lives. With family members and Principal Wilms, please stand as we recognize tonight's honorees. And now with our honorees from the Community Learning Center at Pickney, please join Susie Bogan is this month's Engage, Inspires to See Certified Staff Honoree for the Community Learning Center at Pickney. Mrs. Bogan, middle school teacher at CLC Pickney, inspires students daily with her optimism and belief in their potential. She helps them grow as readers and writers by creating a steady and encouraging classroom where they can build skills and confidence. Her encouragement motivates students to push forward and achieve success. We are proud to recognize her dedication to student growth. Siobhan Person is this month's Engage, Inspires to See Support Staff Honoree from the Community Learning Center at Pickney. Ms. Person, teacher assistant and bus driver at CLC at Pickney, demonstrates professionalism, hard work, and service in every role she fulfills. She approaches each task with excellence and serves as a positive role model for students. Her commitment to both safety and learning reflects her dedication and inspires all who work alongside her. Ms. Person's contributions are deeply valued by her school community. With family members and Principal Wilson, please stand as we recognize tonight's honorees. And unfortunately, our student was unable to be here tonight, but we do congratulate her for being selected for the Student Honoree Engage, Inspires to See for this month from the Community Learning Center at Pickney. And tonight, we do have one additional And tonight, we do have one additional recognition. If Mrs. Andrews would please join our Board Members at the front. On August 27th, Mrs. Andrews displayed exceptional professionalism and care when faced with an unexpected bus accident. Her calm, decisive actions and unwavering focus on the safety and well-being of her students ensured the situation was managed swiftly and effectively. We are incredibly proud of Mrs. Andrews for her composure and commitment during this event. With more than 22 years of dedicated service to our students, families, and schools, she continues to exemplify the highest standards of excellence. Thank you, Mrs. Andrews, for your outstanding service and for embodying the very best of Moore County Schools. With family members and Director of Transportation, Jason, please stand as we honor him. And that concludes the recognition portion of tonight's agenda. I'll give it back to Doc, uh, Dr. Calcutt.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, everybody sees why this is my favorite part, all of our favorite parts, but we'll take a brief recess now at this time, a five-minute recess. Thank you for being here tonight.
Rather than blanket closures designed for countywide bus routes. And number two, a commitment to formally solicit and document parent input before handbook or policy changes are finalized for daycare programs housed in public schools. Unfortunately, it does not appear that this issue has appeared on any board or committee agenda since August 11th, which is why I'm here again tonight asking for your help and support. In my own communications with Principal Sovey at McDeeds Creek, I was told, and I quote, "While I do value parent input, the responsibility for making final decisions regarding the daycare handbook rests with me. In the future, should I determine that parent feedback is needed, I will reach out. However, however, this will only occur if it is deemed necessary." With respect, this callous and dismissive response is exactly why board-level engagement is so desperately needed. Parents are making the equivalent of a mortgage payment for these services, on top of the taxes that fund the public schools where these programs are housed. Yet, under current practice, we have no voice in policies that affect our access to childcare and our ability to work. For a tuition-based, county-subsidized program housed in taxpayer-funded facilities, parent input should not be considered optional or discretionary. This is a short-term, solvable problem. The long-term work of expanding affordable childcare access in Moore County is critical, but in the immediate term, with daycare principals set to meet on September 12th to discuss harmonizing daycare policies across the three schools, I respectfully ask this board to move beyond words of support and offer real, tangible action. Number one, please commit to addressing the unilateral nature of and lack of transparency or parental involvement in daycare policies and procedures for programs housed in public schools. And number two, provide explicit, time-bound instructions to district leadership to update this board on how weather-related closure policies could be reasonably modified to allow more flexibility for tuition-based, self-transported daycare programs housed in public schools. In Moore County, every parent and taxpayer has access to a formal process for feedback and appeal of public school policy. Families enrolled in district-run daycare programs should not be excluded from that same standard of transparency and accountability. A principal of a daycare should not have more unilateral authorities to set policy than that same principal has over the policies of their elementary school. Thank you for your time and for your leadership on behalf of working families in Moore County. Under the wire.
And I'm sorry, how do you spell your name?
Arno, A-R-N-O. First name Jessica.
Arno. Thank you.
McNeil?
So my, it's not, my presentation is not going to be as polished as hers because I'm a pretty angry parent about this. But on the first day of school, my son is a freshman at Pinecrest. He was left on the side of the road by the bus at Aberdeen Elementary School. He was not taken to his destination of Pinecrest High School. And between the, both interactions between both bus drivers where he was initially picked up and then dropped off at the Aberdeen Elementary School between buses, he was told by the bus driver who was brand-new to this area, who never driven a bus in our area, that she did not want him on the bus because she didn't know who he was. But I had spoken to transportation several times that morning regarding the bus situation because the lineup and the routes had been changed, I was told, like, three days before school started. So, a lot of the bus drivers did not know what they were doing the morning of picking up kids for school. And then initially, I thought that the bus that stopped to pick him up was a bus that was changed to a different, he was being changed to a different route because of being on that bus. So Bus 45 was, picked him up, but he was originally routed for Bus 40. So when she stopped in front of my house, I asked her, ma'am, I said, "Are you driving through Pinecrest High School?" And she said, "Yes," she said, "but I have other kids on the bus that I need to drop off first." And so, I don't know how he ended up at Aberdeen Elementary School after transportation told him that he was supposed to stay on that bus until he got to his destination. But in between that time, when I was on the phone with my son, he was telling me, "Ma, they're not allowing me to be on the bus." And so I said, "Well, where are you?" And at this time, I'm on my way to work. So I had to reroute from Midland Road all the way back to Highway 5 to pick my son up because he was left on the side of the road. So when I pulled up to the school, she was leaving the school to take her route, and my son was standing on the side of the road between Highway 5 and turning into Aberdeen Elementary School. I don't know what the problem is with the whole bus situation, but I wish that y'all would get it fixed here very, very soon. I mean, because these kids, along with my son, did not deserve to be dropped off like his freshman, his first day of freshman being at Pinecrest, you know? And I'm an alumni from Pinecrest, so I know what it's like to be not heard. And so, I'm speaking for my son today because he shouldn't have had to start his first day of high school like that. Dropped off on the side of the road at elementary school because of the carelessness of the bus drivers not doing what they were told by transportation. I really don't know what else to say. I was, I, initially, I stood up here to say this because, I mean, at this point, it's like I've been given a runaround about everything that's been going on with the, with the whole school bus situation, and I just don't know what else to do.
Thank you.
May I ask a question, please?
There's generally...
Who does you report this to, ma'am?
Jason Nelson, the director. I spoke to him several times, and I actually got a call from him, from Mr. Tim. I got a call from him on Wednesday after the situation happened because the bus was coming late. The bus never showed up after that. Even after that situation, the bus still never showed up to my house to pick my son up. So I had to take him to school all week long. And then Thursday, when they came to get, when they came to get him, it was already two hours in at school. School had started at 8:45. They didn't get to my house till 10:43 to pick him up for school.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm John Mizziak. For an article in the Pilot, Moore County Schools recently received their most recent performance metrics and improvements were reported. To that, I say congratulations. However, we're watching CNBC this morning, the business channel I always watch. Vivek Ramaswamy, a noted entrepreneur and one-time presidential hopeful, noted that American seventh-grade students perform at the level of third-grade Chinese students. I questioned that statement, and I did a quick search. What he stated is correct. Additionally, both China and India graduate five times the number of STEM graduates every year than we do in America. Yes, they have much larger populations, but it simply says, "We have to try harder." I know there are a lot of conversations about the need for tradespeople in the U.S. right now. However, we can't get lost in the forest for the trees. Congratulations on your demonstrated recent improvements, but we almost recognize we have ground to make up before it's too late. Thank you.
Thanks, Stan. All right. Thank you, our speakers. Thank you, appreciate your time and coming tonight. We're at item six, Board Action, and we will, we have removed item A, so we'll go to item B, second reading of new and revised policies. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, Madam Chair. These are the policies that were reviewed in the board's work session last week, and they do come with my recommendation for approval on second reading, and certainly open to any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
So, we need a motion to approve the recommendation from the superintendent of the new and revised policies. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Right, motion by Dr. Dahl, second by Ms. Davis. Are there any comments? Right, hearing...
Sir, I just have a quick question. So, I assume there's been no changes from the time we reviewed them last week till now, correct?
No, there was a change to Policy 4342 as advised by Mr. Schwartz, and that was to add and prohibit it in two places.
That was the change that was made in the meeting, and Mr. Henley added a correction to it.
Okay. All right. All in favor of approving the recommendation from the superintendent to approve the new and revised policies? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes with seven. Thank you very much. All right, next item is purchase of a new activity bus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mrs. Purvis reviewed this with the board at your work session. It continues to be my recommendation for approval. The board consider a motion to approve the purchase of our new activity bus from White's IC Bus in the amount of $153,213.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the purchase of a new activity bus from White's IC Bus in the amount of $153,213? Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Benway, second. Second, Dr. Dahl. Are there any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, next item is item D, Third Amendment to the Superintendent's Contract. Mr. Schwartz.
This is the Third Amendment to the Superintendent's Contract that was prepared as directed by the board following the superintendent's evaluation. It would extend the term of Dr. Locklear's current contract through June 30, 2029. And in addition to that, it revises number 6, dealing with evaluation, to have the contract match up with board policy regarding the date of continuing, completing the annual evaluation, and to establish a date by which the annual performance goals will be finalized, no later than November 15th each year, which would allow for consideration of the finalized student test data and the school improvement plans that are finalized in October of each year.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion to approve the Third Amendment to the Superintendent's Contract? We have a motion by Ms. Davis. Do we have a second? Second by Dr. Dahl. All those in favor, say aye.
I'm sorry. Discussion.
Okay, all right, sorry, forgot that. Do we have any comments?
Well, can we bring up the attachment, please? So, I just have a couple of questions. So, this would extend, number one there would extend the superintendent's contract until 2029, so that's four years. Mr. Schwartz, what's the maximum number of years that a school board can, that a superintendent's contract can exist? What's the maximum duration?
The maximum is four years from the date the board acts after the first year of the contract. So if the board wanted to tonight, it could extend the contract to September 8, 2029.
Okay, so we are effectively maxing, we're effectively maxing out...
You're within the four years.
Right, okay, yep, thank you.
All right, any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes, six one. Thank you very much. All right, we're at item E, Constitution Day Proposal, as requested by Board Member Benway. Mr. Benway, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Okay, I'd like to thank the chair and the board for permitting this to go forward here. Do we have slides? Okay, United States is going to celebrate America 250 in 2026, and Moore County's going to do the same. Next one, please. Moore County Schools will participate through symbolic events and year-long educational activities. Next, please. Part one of this whole thing is kind of a short, fused one. We're going to celebrate Constitution Day on the 17th of September by ringing the old schoolhouse bell at noon time, and hopefully we get some press coverage and video of the superintendent and the chair making appropriate comments. And hopefully, this will ensure the students and faculty begin participating in these upcoming events. It will sort of kick off the 2026 celebration of our 250th anniversary as a nation. And hopefully, we can generate some classroom tie-ins to reflect on that constitution. Next, please. Part two of this extends through 2026, and we're proposing curriculum tie-ins in history and civics classes, dramatizations and living history of key events and figures, generating student art, music, and writing projects inspired by American ideals, and to participate in community events exhibits and civic participation partnerships. Next, please. The purpose is also to strengthen the students' connection to American heritage. We've sort of lost the connection there over the years, and this is a great opportunity to resurrect that, reinstate it, and give it some depth. We want to encourage civic pride and showcase Moore County Schools as a leader among schools in the America 250 celebration. Next, please. And we hope that parents, community leaders, and civic groups support this effort, be in partnership with us, and together we prepare students to honor the past and shape the future of their nation. Next, please. And that concludes that. I would like to read a proposed resolution, and that will conclude my presentation. Resolution of the Moore County Schools Board of Education to commemorate Constitution Day 2025 and the United States Semi-Quincentennial America 250 Celebration. Whereas the United States of America will celebrate the 250th anniversary of Independence in 2026, marking a milestone of national reflection, commemoration, and renewal. And whereas the North Carolina General Assembly has called for statewide observances leading up to this historic occasion, beginning with the ringing of bells on Constitution Day, September 17th, 2025. And whereas the Moore County Schools Board of Education recognizes the value of engaging students in living history, civic awareness, and expressions of American heritage. And whereas the bell at the old schoolhouse in Moore County stands as a symbol of educational and civic tradition, making it a fitting instrument for participation in this statewide commemoration. Now, therefore, be it resolved, one, Constitution Day 2025 observance. Moore County Schools shall participate in America 250 Constitution Day by ringing the old schoolhouse bell at noon on September 15th, 2025, enabling students and faculty to experience and reflect upon this symbolic act. Part two, America 250 Heritage Year 2026. Throughout the calendar year 2026, Moore County Schools shall plan and implement curriculum tie-ins in history and civics to include classroom lessons highlighting the path to the Declaration of Independence in 1776 and the U.S. Constitution in 1787. Dramatizations and reenactments of key debates, events, and personages of the founding era. Student art, music, and writing projects inspired by American heritage and civic ideals. School and community displays of student work, performances, and civic-themed events. Part three, community and civic engagement. Moore County Schools shall collaborate with parents, civic organizations, historical societies, and veterans groups to provide opportunities for community participation and to showcase student contributions to the America 250 celebrations. Be it further resolved, that this resolution be entered into the official record of the Moore County Schools Board of Education, and that superintendent and staff be directed to develop detailed plans and resources to support these initiatives. That will be signed by the chair and by the superintendent. Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we accept this resolution as written.
Thank you, sir. And I would, in just a minute, ask Ms. Sinem to come share, but before we get Ms. Sinem to come up and share what is already happening in Moore County Schools, do we have a second to Mr. Benway's motion? Okay, thank you. Second by Ms. Bruno. Now it's time for comments, and I would like to ask Ms. Sinem to come up, if you don't mind, and share what we've had going on, what's currently going on for our civic instruction.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, board members and Dr. Locklear. Ms. Gebhart, who is our Director for Curriculum Instruction, her and her team have activities that they pull together to celebrate Constitution Day, which is on Wednesday, September 17th, and also some 9/11 resources to celebrate 9/11. So, it's broken up into must-dos that the teachers must do, administrators must do, beginning with school-wide announcements about the anniversary of the United States Constitution. And then they also have some books that they do read alouds with in their language arts classrooms. One book that is used in K-2 is called "The U.S. Constitution." And then students create graphic organizers. They do a draw-and-write about their favorite memory, about the read-aloud, and then have discussions throughout that. For grades three through five, they have a book that they use called "A More Perfect Union," and students complete a Constitution treasure hunt during the read-aloud, and then also do some reflective writing on that, so we make sure that we've got that writing that's infused throughout. And then for our secondary schools, we have a video called "The Making of the Constitution." That is shown at the beginning of all first-period classes, 6 through 12. And then students have a video questionnaire that they complete. They also have time for students to write, and also time for students to discuss different things that they saw throughout the video. There's also quite a few activities that are may-dos, so we have some additional things that our teachers are able to do with a lot of different resources based on the grade level band. So we have resources for our K-2 students and teachers. We have resources for 3-5, and then also resources for 6-12. One of the things that Ms. Phillips and I are doing this year is we've sent out a survey to our principals so that they can say, like, "These are the activities that we've done," but then these are also some extension activities. So they have the opportunity to do, if there's other activities that they want to do around Constitution Day, around 9/11, they can certainly do those activities, and they share those out. That also helps us to share those other activities, those other resources, with other schools. So if there's something else that one of our elementary schools wants to do, they have some additional resources. So all of those resources are shared with our principals, and then they share those with the teachers so that they can do those, and then we follow up with them as well. As far as 9/11 resources, we also have morning announcements, the morning of 9/11. If September 11th falls on a Saturday or a Sunday, they do that on Friday so that they can celebrate our country through those activities as well. They have various resources, again, for K-2, 3-5, and then 6-12 that they can use, including things from the 9/11 Memorial Museum that they can utilize. And they have multiple books that they have for read-aloud for our students. They have 14 Cows for America, The Man in the Red Bandana, and then America is Under Attack, September 11th, 2001, The Day the Towers Fell. There's also a lot of ReadWorks articles online that they can use based on their grade level, where they read and answer questions and discuss different things. There's different discussion questions and writing prompts that can be used for those 9/11 resources as well.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, comments?
I guess I just...
Go ahead, please, go.
No, I just wanted to share what I shared with Mr. Benway. The other day, whenever we were at the New Innovative High School ribbon-cutting, I was pleased to see when we were walking through the halls and seeing the classroom, they had two large dry erase boards with their calendar written out for the students as they were going by, and Constitution Day was noted on there. So I know that we're doing this, at least in part, and I appreciate the beefing up of it.
Great. I think there's an opportunity here, over the course of the next year, to really build a, to create a recursive, if you will, a cumulative kind of a history in the minds of kids and show the relationships and the initial efforts building to an actual constitution and a new nation. I think we've got a great opportunity here, and I think the kids enjoy it. So I look forward to watching that curriculum mature in that direction. Thank you.
Other comments, questions, thoughts?
I have a comment. I think Mr. Benway's presentation here tonight was absolutely terrific, and I'm so glad to hear, Jamie, that we're doing all that. These things need to be taught for our children. They need to have pride in who they are, and I am 150% behind this. I think it's wonderful. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. Johnson?
I was just going to ask and follow up on the, what was the information we got about scholarship regarding, I believe, a Northmore student won a scholarship around Constitution debate, or, I just want to make sure I...
That was in the national, Ms. Bruno shared it, to remind us about it, American Legion oratory scholarship process. We did have a student who won that from Northmore High School last year, and we're making sure that we're sharing that with our high schools and making sure we're connecting with all our American Legions to see the process they may have for that.
Just one more thing. Moore County has had designated representatives on the planning board at state level, so we have the opportunity to work with that person. And I believe Sandhills Community College also has a representative on this planning board. So, as that evolves, we ought to be able to get some feedback on what's going on and perhaps leverage those plans. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Benway. It's a true celebration, and that's how we have our public schools today. We are America's public schools, and teaching democracy and how our country evolved is very important, and I really appreciate all the time and effort you put into this. Thank you for your patience with us. At this time, we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor of approving our resolution and our efforts to promote our Constitution Day in Moore County, all in favor, say aye. Did you have a...
Well, I just have a question. Are we just vote, are we just voting on the proclamation?
The resolution.
The resolution.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I thought. All right, thank you.
All in favor of the, excuse me, of the resolution as proposed by Member Benway, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All in favor. Thank you. Motion passes. All right, we are at item eight, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, again, I want to really congratulate our entire team, as we saw with our student accountability results that released tremendous growth throughout our county, and we continue to be focused on continuous improvement. Our theme this year is diving deeper into Moore County Schools' way. It's not easy work, but it's the right work for our students and our families and our community, and I'm very proud of our team. With that, I'd also congratulate our entire team, where we're talking about operations, where we're talking about our teachers, our staff at our schools, on a great first two weeks of school. We're off and running into the 25-22 school year, and I believe it's going to be a fantastic year. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. And we're at board comments. Do we have a volunteer you'd like to start? Board comments, any comments?
I'll volunteer. I just want to say, I was really glad to see Ms. Andrews recognized tonight for her bravery and composure on our bus accident, and I was really glad that she was there when we needed her most, and just kind of shows the value of having an experienced bus driver. And I would encourage any folks that are interested in driving a bus in Moore County Schools to continue to apply, and we'll make you a Ms. Andrews as well, so.
All right, any other comments? All right, I will conclude. Thank you very much to our board members. I really appreciate each one of you, and to our staff for an enjoyable and productive meeting. Thank you to Ms. Wilson for coming and leading us in the pledge. Congratulations to our students, families, and employees who successfully began the 2025-26 school year. We're very pleased that the Transportation Department continues to improve our bus services. We're so thankful to our families and students, and we're so thankful for Ms. Hazel Andrews and her dedicated service to our school community. Congratulations to our school community for the Moore Innovative High School. It was an exciting grand opening and ribbon-cutting with speeches from our leaders, Dr. Locklear, Ms. Sikoni, Representative Jackson, Dr. Stewart, Commissioner Adams. Our students participated, and one student shared that this opportunity changed his life. So that is powerful. We celebrate and applaud the Moore County Schools' students, staff, teachers, and family members, and community members, the hard work and professional instructional delivery for our results. Our effective resources, collaboration with our families and the community have reaped the benefits for our students. Moore County Schools District sets the example in the state and nation as the first and best choice in education. Thank you very much for being here tonight. We're at the conclusion of adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Do we have a second? All right, motion by Ms. Davis, second by Dr. Dahl. All in favor, say aye. Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.